I am very excited and welcome everyone to our first meeting of the new Health, Education, and Neighborhood Councils Committee. And I just want to start today while we wait for the other council members come because I know we have a lot of public comment cards. So, welcome everyone to the very first meeting. This is very exciting for me now that we have neighborhood councils as part of the committee. Very much looking forward to it as a former neighborhood council member myself. This is something I wanted from the beginning, the day I got elected. We only had to wait two years, but here we are. So, today is August 8th, 1:05 PM, and we're in City Hall Room 1010. We don't have a quorum yet, but I do like to start by asking the CLA to read item number one because we do have Ms. Patricia Williams here.
Brian Randall, Office of the CLA. Item number one is a communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Ms. Patricia Williams to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. You know what, Mr. CLA, I'm so sorry. Before we call up Ms. Patricia Williams, I'd like to... This is a special meeting of the committee, so there will be no public comment. However, I will be taking multiple comment cards. And I believe we have Mr. Herman. You sign up for all items. If you could come on up, we'll give you three minutes. If you can address item one, two, and three.
Yeah, I'm right here. Regarding the mayor's disabled access appeals, well, none of us know what an access appeal truly is all about, other than that when you're denied access to any public meeting, that's called discrimination under the ADA Title II and Title III under Local Government 42 USC 1983. Regarding what? Oh, outreach to individuals in group level education and counseling, to homeless and runaway. Well, I'm not going to use that word gay. I prefer the word fag youth like myself. I'm just a fag. There's nothing wrong with being a queer like myself, but you just gotta sometimes let people know where you're at.
Please stick to the items, please.
Yeah, I'm dealing with disabled access. I'm talking about the LGBT if I can speak. But, never mind. Let me go to number two now. Can I go to number two now?
Yes, please.
Boss man? Thank you. Regarding HIV prevention, well, maybe if Mitchell Farrell would tell us more about AIDS prevention, we can all get an understanding of how it's like to die with AIDS in your life. When I worked at County USC dealing with the AIDS population and the AIDS epidemic in 1995, County USC, I sure hell know what it's like to die with AIDS. You don't want to die alone, you know? You never want to die alone. Just something so horribly wrong with that. Now, if I had HIV prevention services, you know, I would contact the city and say, hey, you know, I need HIV housing so I could die with dignity in my home as opposed to dying in a USC county bed. And then I go to item three. Where the fuck is Herman and Gilbert? Shh, do your part. Neighborhood empowerment report, physical impact statement submitted by Baller Beverly Crest, Downtown Los Angeles Council, Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council, Greater Valley Glen Neighborhoods, Greater Wilshire, Harbor Gateway, Hollywood Hills, Lake Valboa, Los Feliz, Palms Neighborhoods, Silver Lake. What's with these fucking neighborhood empowerments if they don't protect our rights under 42 USC and stop the censorship of City Hall? We're all public speakers. We all know what the fuck we really want to say to some stupid schmuck asshole politician but don't got the balls. So, I'll do it for you. Fuck you, Rue.
Thank you. If we could have Mr. Spindler who signed up for all three items as well, three minutes.
Yes, for the record, Mr. Gilbert's deal is here. Yay.
So, we start off, where's the star attraction? Where's Herbie Herman Jason Wesson Jr.?
Spindler, if you could stick to the items on hand.
We are. We're talking about the committee and quorum. So, let's go to number one. I'll take this.
Communication to the Disabled Access Appeal Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2022 for Ms. Patricia Williams.
So, what is this? Disabled access appeal? Alls you have to do is sue under 42 USC 1983 if you want disabled access. Fuck the Disabled Access Appeal Commission. We don't need it. Close it down, defund it, give all the money to CD1 for cleanup of homeless encampments that are too pervasive. Number two, 16 HIV Prevention Program Service Provider Contracts. Well, how do you stop AIDS? Two ways you can stop AIDS. One, stop shooting up, and two, stop fucking. That's the way you stop HIV. You only get it from fucking and getting high. So, don't get high, just say no, and stop fucking, and then you don't get HIV. Simple as that. Ask Magic Johnson. He got it from fucking. Now, I get to number three, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment Report, Online Voting. General Jeff. Yes, General Jeff tried to get himself a Skid Row Neighborhood Council. They fucked it by online voting. All the people in the Downtown Neighborhood Council fought the election with the online voting. We have experts here, sitting in the back. We have two people from Studio City. Fuck you. They don't want online voting. Baller says, fuck you. Downtown Neighborhood Council says, fuck you. Greater Wilshire, fuck you. South Roberts, fuck you. Studio City, fuck you. Valley Village, fuck you. Venice, fuck you. West Los Angeles, fuck you. Westchester, fuck you. And finally, Woodland Hills says, fuck you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilmember Gil Sadio. We now have quorum. Thank you very much. And, you know, we have so many neighborhood councils here today and so many people from the community. Who's been here for the first time, to City Hall or to the committee meetings? Okay, great. So, many of you already are aware of the free speech, right? Which we value. So, thank you so much for sitting through that. And we are also joined by our council president, Mr. Herb Wesson. With that, Mr. CLA, if you could read in number one, please.
Item number one is a communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Ms. Patricia Williams to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. And before we take this item on consent, Ms. Williams, if you could come on forward. Thank you so very much for sitting through that. And if you could just briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and what you hope to accomplish in the next term as commission, in the commission.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a retired stationary operating engineer. I believe very much in being of service to my community. I served already one term on the Access Commission, and my part of it was representing the construction industry because I have a good knowledge of construction, having worked in the high rises, having been aware of disabled access and all of the issues in it, new construction, tenant improvement, and everything involved with it.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, you have any questions?
Yep.
For Commissioner. Thank you so very much for your service and for, again, allowing us to have the privilege of having you on the commission again for a second term.
You're welcome, it's my pleasure.
There should be no problems, and we, again, thank you for your service. So, I'd like to take this item on consent?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
That's it. Thank you very much.
It'll go to City Council.
Okay.
They'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
So, item number two. I'd like to move to item number two. Mr. CLA, would you please read that into the record?
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and city administrative officer report relative to the 16 HIV Prevention Program Service Provider Contracts for the renewal period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. And, Mr. Chair, for the record, we were informed that there needed to be a change to the contract here, so we went ahead and made that change when you read the item.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, this is a standard Department of Disability Transmittal, so I'd like to propose that we vote on consent as well?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you. Seeing no objection, so moved. And item number three, I'd like to move to item number three. Mr. CLA, if you could please read that record into the item.
Item number three is a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment Report relative to an online voting pilot for the Neighborhood Council Elections.
Thank you. And we have multiple comment cards on this item, but I just really want to, again, thank my colleagues because this item is about the Neighborhood Council Elections and whether they should be held in 2018 or 19. But first, I'd like to thank my colleagues and thank Council President for all of his tremendous work that he's done on advancing neighborhood councils, first putting it into his committee. And thank you for still staying on this committee because not only is he a committee member, but he is our council president. So, he didn't just let go of the Neighborhood Councils, he still kept it on board. So, I really thank you for that. But for this item, whether the election is held in 18 or 19, either way, we're going to have a lot of work before us related to Neighborhood Council Elections and reforms that have been pending in the Neighborhood Council system. I'd like to start by first, well, you know, acknowledge all the work that the council president has done. For example, like increasing their budgets, providing more standing during public comments at council meetings, finishing up on... Finishing up on the subdivision ordinance and much, much more. And, you know, as I stated before in the beginning of the meeting, as a former Neighborhood Council member myself, I really appreciate the council president's commitment to the Neighborhood Council system, and I'm very excited to now take the mantle of the newly refashioned Health, Education, and Neighborhood Council Committee. You know, our Neighborhood Councils are critical to this city, and our Neighborhood Councils are the grass tops of our neighborhoods. They also serve as a laboratory for our civic engagement. And during 2016, the laboratory took form of online voting. And that pilot had substantial success considering the size and scale of the project, but it also had some very large pitfalls. The process started late, the voter database was not handled securely, and there was not enough outreach from the city to take advantage of the full effect of the online voting platform. These errors led to the council to suspend the online voting in December pending a review. Dunn has provided a report reviewing the online voting issues in the subsequent report requested by my office in the last few days. Dunn was also instructed by the prior committee to reinstate online voting for a limited continuation of the pilot for the Downtown Neighborhood Council Skid Row subdivision election. In that election, 1,388 voters, or 87% of the vote, cast their votes online. Online voting, I believe, is an important part of the Neighborhood Council system future, but we need to be able to run the election cleanly, securely, and without risk to the city. We also need some more robust outreach that does not rely on individual Neighborhood Councils as the main vehicle for responsibly notifying constituents that a Neighborhood Council Election is happening. That and other details are what I hope to discuss today and at our next meeting the next two weeks in order to give clear marching orders to the city, to the city clerk, Dunn and our Neighborhood Councils on when elections will be held and how they'll be run. But first, I'd like to hear from the public on this item. And we have a lot of comment cards signed up, so, you know, in the... I know some of the members have another meeting that they can't miss later, so I just want to, in the interest of keeping quorum, I'd like to keep it to one minute, if that's okay? So, if I could first, I'm going to call three people up. Leonard Schaffner, Jerome Kershon, and Robert Brostoff. If you could come on up. State your name.
Leonard Schaefer, Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Chair Rue, glad to see you up here, Mr. Wesson and Mr. Sadio. I would like to speak to one issue with regards to elections that is still pending and would be pending before this committee. The Board of Neighborhood Commissioners said that they would be pleased to work on the definition of the stakeholder with regards to ongoing, et cetera. That has been pending for some time. We're hoping that it can get out of committee before, whenever the elections may. It would be a little late to do it for 2018, but we should be able to do it for 2019 or come up with an alternative to the current definition, something such as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerome Kershon, Vice Chairman of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. Good afternoon, council members. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, we do support Dunn's recommendation that elections be postponed to 2019 to iron out all the issues for online voting. And speaking personally, I support online voting, but there were many, many issues, as you know, and as is, I believe, is outlined in the report. And one of them, which may not be in the report, is that there were a lot of issues with the company that was engaged to deal with this. Everyone counts. And one of the big issues was when people would register, they would get the email for the PIN and ballot, but it would go into their spam. Many of them would go into the spam filter, which means they were not whitelisted with the ISPs. That's a problem. People didn't know to look in their spam folders. And then there were a significant number who, they just didn't see the email, it didn't come to them. Took days and weeks. We lost a lot of people in voting. Last thing I'd like to say, if I may, is the pop-up polls is a great thing. Would love to see Dunn have the resources, the funding, to support more pop-up polls when that starts going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Brostoff. I'm speaking for myself, although I am also a member of the West Hills Neighborhood Council. It is far too late to hold an election in 2018. Many councils did not expect that to happen, therefore, they did not budget for it. They expected it to happen in 2019. That was true of the West Hills Neighborhood Council. Funding an election next year is not in our budget. In addition to that, ultimately, I assume that because of the city clerk's office, it's going to have to move to odd years anyway. Why not do it now? This is too late to make a change. This is too late to hold an election in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd call the next three, Gary Agus, Ryan Reins, or Rean Reins, and Charles Lindenblatt.
My name is Gary Agus. Good afternoon, council people. Thank you, Councilwoman Wesson, for your help with the Neighborhood Councils. It's greatly appreciated. I'm with the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council, and we are on record as being in favor of moving the election from 2018 to 19. As the last gentleman said, it's too soon for us. We don't have it budgeted. We hadn't planned on it. And this was requested by the city clerk, so that's why we went along with it. Also, we'll give you time to iron out some more of the kinks with the online voting. And as far as online voting, the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council has voted against that for our Neighborhood Council. So, as long as we can opt out, that's fine with us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Rean Reins, I'm speaking as an individual today with no affiliations. Just wanted to speak to the matter of online voting. It's a great system, as many of you are aware of. In concept, there are still some issues that need to be ironed out, and I applaud the department and city council for, you know, keeping that system in mind. But in all fairness, I believe that moving the elections over to 2019, the odd years is going to be much more beneficial to the city. It's going to save us a lot of grief fiscally. Just rushing is not going to end well for all of us. So, I urge you, council members, to please keep that in mind, and I thank you again for your consideration on the online voting system.
Thank you. My name is Charles Lindenblatt. I am a former long-term member of the Mid-City West Community Council, and I'm here to ask you to support what Mid-City West suggested, which was to hold the elections as scheduled in 2018 and then extend for three years after that, as I think that's the best way to go in this situation. Also, in regards to the general issue of online voting, I would urge that online voting not be allowed because there were too many problems in the last go-around, and I don't believe that the problems could be solved adequately to address many concerns of various stakeholders. So, thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to call Patricia Brennan, Steve Randall, and Simone Best.
It's Berman, and I'm sorry for my lousy handwriting. Mr. Wesson, thank you so much for what you do for the Neighborhood Councils. It's much appreciated. My name is Patty Berman. I'm the president of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. And first of all, I would like to agree with a lot of what's been said about the 2018-2019 issue. It's too late to have 2018 elections. We were told that they weren't going to happen. No one has budgeted for them. And it's not like your types of terms. Someone can leave a Neighborhood Council if they find that it's been too onerous and they need to get out. The board seats can be filled, and therefore, having the elections in 2019 being the right thing for the city clerk's office is the way to go. It also gives us time to take some of the kinks out of online voting. I just want to say that I know that most of the people who are over 60 are going to be against online voting because it's not the way we do it. I'd like to go on record, I'm 70, I'm totally in favor of it, and I believe it's where we need to go.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Steve Randall, West Hills Neighborhood Council, a member of the West Hills Neighborhood Council Elections Committee. I just want to weigh in on the date. I think that elections should be held off until 2019. Just extend everybody the one year rather than cutting some terms short. And regarding the online voting, I believe that the registration process needs to be simplified and the problems resolved that we had last time, but I'm very much in favor of it. I'm speaking as an individual, by the way. The voters in Neighborhood Councils should have three options. We have a very old population in West Hills. A lot of the people don't use computers. I think mail votes, mail-in voting is going to be very important to them. Otherwise, they're not going to be able to participate. We do, I do not support the requiring of the allocation of 20% of a Neighborhood Council's budget to elections. Thank you.
Please.
Is it afternoon yet? Hello. My name is Simone Best. I'm with West Hills Neighborhood Council. I'm representing them. My compatriot here, Steve, said a lot of what I want to say. However, I want you to know that we do support online voting very much. However, we need to move the election to 2019 so that we can educate our people more as well as fund the elections from our budget. Currently, we have nothing in our budget for this funding. We would have to cut from other programs. In the CIS from the council, which was a unanimous vote of 20 with five absents, we have outlined several of our comments and also our recommendations regarding qualifications and methods of registration, et cetera. I personally had problems with the registration and had to defend the city on the registration process. Therefore, I ask you to let the report continue.
Thank you. Next three names, Tony Wilkinson, Anne Marie Johnson, and David Rockello.
Mr. Chair, can I just jump in for one second? Again, hello to everybody that's here. I know so many... What's so cool is to come into a room when you know so many, so many people, people that you've established a relationship with over years. Those are my adopted kids over there with Joanne. But what I wanted to just say before they begin to testify, I did this, but you weren't there. I want to thank Tony Wilkinson. When I came up with this crazy idea to step in and try to maintain the ship of Council District 7, I asked a guy to come out of retirement and come and work with us on a part-time basis. He agreed. I don't know why, but he did. And then when staff were leaving to go to other places, I asked if he would come on full-time, and he did it. And I just want to, in front of your peers and our other elected colleagues, thank you so very much for the service to not only the district, but to me personally. And I just want you to know that as long as I live, I will not forget what you did for me and what you did for the people of the 7th District. And I just wanted to say that on the record in front of Tony because he's kind of a low-key guy. But I wanted people to know that I appreciated it very, very, very much. Just for the hell of it, give Tony a round of applause. Now, Tony, don't come up here and say something crazy and embarrass me. Remember your training.
I actually want to respond to that because that 10 months was an opportunity for the constituents and the crazy council president and me out there as his liaison to realize that we've got to work together to solve problems. It's not about you guys have to do it. And so, I want to extend personal thanks to all three of you for being on this committee because I think it's really important for Neighborhood Councils to work with elected officials to make the system better. And last night, I'm vice president of North Hills East Neighborhood Council, the unanimous request of CIS, but it hasn't been filed yet, so I'm here as an individual recommending going to 2019 because we don't think that the answers to the questions you asked as council people about online voting have come in yet. And despite the August report, things like pop-up voting, which is an unannounced polling place, the public didn't know about it, and the geographic selection of where they are may be geographically discriminating, that kind of thing needs more talk. So, please make it 2019.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. President, for that. You know, now that you said that, now myself and Councilmember Sadio has to call out all our Neighborhood Council members. But in the interest of time, and you are the council president.
Just the employees.
Well, he worked for him.
Yeah. Okay, please. Anne Marie.
Anne Marie Johnson, co-chairwoman of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council first. Thank you very much, committee. Congratulations, Councilman Rue. We have a, the Neighborhood Council Silver Lake has a wonderful relation, working relationship with you, and we are reaching out to you in the future to help us have the same relationship with Council District 13. For the record, the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council actually voted and submitted the required document prior to the deadline. The Neighborhood Council supports the extension to 2019. I just want that on the record. The board overwhelmingly supported that option. And just procedurally, out of fairness, I think we should have been accorded the two minutes that was provided to those who polluted this room with their nasty language and rude behavior. We are here doing the service of the city for our constituents at no pay whatsoever. So, I suggest in the future, if you can, allow us the two minutes that you allowed those vile human beings. Thank you.
Definitely. Just for the record, those earlier folks, individuals, were allotted one minute each to. So, thank you.
David Rockello, President of Rampart Village Neighborhood Council. Honorable councilmen, thank you for having this today. I'm here to tell you that although we don't have our CIS in, Rampart Village voted to extend to 2019 in May, and I was the person that was asking for this and lank and moved that motion. And so, we'd really like to see 2019, not because we can't afford to do this, it's not enough time. It's not enough time to really do the outreach that needs to be done to our stakeholders. Right now, I'm the chair of the election committee, and we're educating our folks, and we're teaching them what Neighborhood Councils are. So, we need more time to do that properly. And online voting, yes. Pop-up polls, 21 days out ahead, that's a great idea, but please, paper ballots on Election Day.
Great to see you. My name is Robert Newman. I'm the vice president of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. First of all, we also have submitted a CIS, and inherent in that, we support the elections being moved to 2019. That gives us enough time. Also, I've been involved in two of the online elections in my tenure, and I've seen an improvement between the first time we did online voting and the second time. And I encourage that we do it, not only because of the demographics and it makes it easier for people to vote, but also it's a civic engagement tool because it helps us with outreach as well. So, I encourage that we continue to do online voting. Thank you.
Glenn Bailey, I'm president of North Ridge East Neighborhood Council, and I'm also a past president of Encino. Both neighborhood councils have voted to support the postponement of the elections to 2019. Both neighborhood councils used online voting, and the things went smoothly on Election Day. However, there were definitely glitches leading up to that point of people not getting their passcodes. We, maybe a third of the people, had to come in because they couldn't get the passcodes ahead of time. So, there's definitely work that needs to be done there. You should have a letter on file from the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils from Jill Banks Barad on that executive committee, so I'd appreciate if that be entered into the record. That group represents the 34 neighborhood councils of the valley, and although we're not, all neighborhood councils not unanimous, the position of the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils is to support the postponement of the elections to 2019. And just, probably won't have time to say that, but you know, the voters voted to consolidate the elections, extend your terms by a year and a half, and I think at that same action, it could be argued that they, the consequences that our terms and election got postponed too.
Please.
Hi, my name is Betsy Isrela, and I'm secretary of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council and also co-chair of the Outreach Committee. First, thank you for having this meeting and congratulations, council member. 2016 was the first time I participated in any way in a neighborhood council election. And as you know, as Jerome and Anne Marie said, the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council overwhelmingly supports pushing the elections to 2019. During the voting process, I was especially concerned with the issues senior citizens had, not only with online voting, but with the tablets and the whole process of in-person voting. I think there was confusion, and I think when there's confusion, people become embarrassed, and sometimes they don't vote. So, I appreciate if people can take the time to get the voters the support, the information they need. Thank you.
Thank you. I call the next three, Judy Price, Lisa Sarkin, and Andy Griggs.
Good afternoon. I'm Judy Price. I'm a past president of a neighborhood council, but I'm currently a stakeholder, and it's no surprise that neighborhood councils would vote to extend their term by a year. To say they're not prepared for 2018 is ridiculous, because when they ran their elections in 2016, it was for a two-year term, and it should be for a two-year term. It's totally unfair to stakeholders for you to extend their term. But it's also not on the agenda today, so I assume you're not going to be voting on the term extension. The tail should also not wag the dog, to delay it because of online. I oppose online currently, because you can't do voter verification. You can't see, like you can with paper ballots, and they don't keep the records in the computer, how people voted. And that is totally illegal. You have to be able to verify the vote. Thank you.
Lisa Sarkin, I'm the past president of the Studio City Neighborhood Council, and in fact, this particular motion was written because of what happened at our election. There was no way to verify the online voting. We don't know what happened with any of it. All of the information that people put in was leaked out, and many, many, many people have been hacked, even though the city did ask people if they wanted to sign up for whatever that mechanism is that protects you, but you have to give your social security number over line and over the line, and nobody wanted to do it. But even though the Studio City Neighborhood Council is basically a totally dysfunctional neighborhood council right now, they did allocate $6,000 for the 2018 election. I think it's ridiculous that anyone who thinks that somebody who's on a board is not going to vote for themselves to have an extended term is nuts, and I don't think any of you guys would have done it or allowed that to happen. So, I don't think the voting that went on at each neighborhood council should even count.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, my name is Andy Griggs, and I'm a member of the Echo Park Neighborhood Council, and I want to thank you for having this. There's a lot to be said about online voting, but there are a lot of problems with it. One of the major ones is, of course, the amount of time and security that's involved, but another is a factor that is relating to many neighborhood councils, including our own, and that is outreach and translation. We've talked, there's another agenda item in the city right now about possibly giving extra money to certain neighborhood councils in terms of providing translation at meetings, because that can wipe out an entire amount of money from their budgets in order to provide translation for people. You've got to reach out to people who do not speak English totally, and I really encourage you to consider that.
Thank you. Next three, Ann Jobe, Corinne Ho, and Mark Masuri.
Those are two of my dear ones.
The Silmar Neighborhood Council did vote not to extend to 2016 on the very thought that we should not vote ourselves an extra year. But we do understand that the situation of having that extra year and doing online voting right is truly important and probably is the better choice. Ann is speaking for herself there. I do not accept the idea that the great city of Los Angeles cannot do online voting. I think that's where we need to be. I know we had our problems. Silmar was the very first neighborhood council to vote online, and it was challenging. We met the challenge. It was not without problems, but this is a great city, and we can certainly handle this. And if we just do what you said, David, Rue, when you started out, if we do that, we'll be there. Thank you.
Council President Wesson, good afternoon. Councilmember Rue, Councilmember Sidio, good afternoon. My name is Corinne Ho, former president of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, here to speak on behalf of myself. Our neighborhood council was one of the 34 neighborhood councils who opted for the online voting. There is no question, no doubt, that there were challenges, as mentioned previously by the speakers. I do also think that that is the way to go for the future, to engage the citizens and to engage the younger voters. I do think that we need to have both options available for the voters. I think also, in speaking with some board members from several neighborhood councils, that it would make sense to extend the online, the election to 2019 for the reason that we need more time to do outreach. Some of us have not budgeted for the elections, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mark Masuri Los Feliz. Look, everyone is going to be for extending to 2019, because it's easier. It's low-hanging fruit. It's easier for the councils. It's easier for Dunn. It's easier for you. But it undermines the system. Instead of telling you all the problems, I'm just going to tell you what the answer is. Hold an election in 2018, because we are all budgeted for it. The last announcement went out, said, "Be prepared for 2018." We're discussing 2019. Hold an election in 2019 and hold an election in 2021. Let the councils opt into it based on what they need. Why 2018? Because I don't want to tell my stakeholders I gave myself an extended term, nor does any of my board. All right? We don't want to say, "Well, it was dictated upon us by the city council and the Department of Neighborhood Powerment." Imagine in Kentucky if Rand Paul and Mitch McConnell got an extra term because Kentucky couldn't get it together for elections. How would that fly? It wouldn't fly, and it shouldn't fly here, because it's saying, "We don't take this very seriously to do it right." Those are your three options, and you make the councils buy into which one works the best for them, and then you're there.
Thank you, Mark. Our last two speakers is Doug Fitzsimmons and Joanne Yovanik Garb.
My name is Doug Fitzsimmons. I'm president of the South Robertson Neighborhood Council and also chair of the West Side Regional Alliance of Councils. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you today. My neighborhood council has submitted an extensive CIS on the election issues, but I do want to draw your attention to a few things. We did vote to extend all terms for a year. We feel it's a reasonable compromise, given the shift in other city elections to reduce the burden by the city clerk, although I do share personally some of the concerns of the previous speaker in terms of legitimacy of our last election. There are a couple structural issues with online voting. We were one of the pilot programs. Half of our votes came in through online elections. We think it's a strong and important supplement to regular voting, but we do ask that the voter photo ID requirement be eliminated to bring us in line with state, federal regulations. And we need serious thought given to pop-ups. We saw electioneering rules not really enforced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Yovanik Garb, West Hills Neighborhood Council, chair of the Government Relations Committee. We voted to extend our term to 2019 and 2021. I know personally, from trying to register online, and I'm fairly computer savvy, that there were some problems there, and then, when I went to vote, they didn't have me registered. So, I had to re-register at the polls. And that was a little disappointing also. I had quite a few other people that I had encouraged to vote, and they had difficulty registering. So, I know that it was, it was not properly beta-tested. I think, I think we could have done a better job of beta-testing and do maybe some elections beforehand, just as a practice, so that we would know where the kinks were.
Thank you. And our very last speaker, Kurt Cabrera.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Kurt Cabrera Miller. I'm the president of Silmar Neighborhood Council. I think most people said it equally. Silmar did not vote to move forward. We voted not to extend our elections, because we didn't feel it would be fair to extend ours. However, we're fully supportive of what this committee decides to do. Online voting, I was one of the guinea pigs at the very first one, as you know, Silmar was the first. My husband and I kept getting booted off, because we have the same last name. So, that was interesting. It noted that he was black and I was white, but it kept booting us off. I can tell you that the administrators, Stephen and everybody else, were phenomenal. The tech support that we got was always within 24 hours. So, with the problems that were entailed, the solutions were followed. So, it did work for us as voters and as residents. As somebody who got elected, it was very frustrating to listen to our stakeholders complain about there were no paper ballots, that the tablets, and just the newness of it. Surely, as city of L.A., we can do better. I see us doing better today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much. Thank you to all the neighborhood council members and community members who came out to testify, especially from far reaches of our city like Silmar and beyond. Thank you so very much for coming and taking time out of your busy day. We've gotten all your letters as well and all your numerous phone calls and emails, so we're very well aware of a lot of the issues. And thank you so much. And I've also gotten a lot of information from Councilmember, Council President Wesson, the previous chair, as well as Councilman Paul Krikorian, when they both did their listening tours. So, we're compiling all that information. So, thank you so very much, and we will definitely consolidate all your information. But at this time, I'd like to ask Dunn, city clerk, and representatives from everyone council to come to the table. If you guys could make it a, and just to let the audience know, we are going to postpone this, we are going to push it back with some additional reports for another two weeks, so the vote will be next, in the next two weeks at the next meeting. So, with that said, and I know we've been in many talks, if you guys could condensely, because the council president has...
We're not going to vote on this today?
No, we're gonna, yeah, we're not going to vote on it today. We're going to push it for two weeks.
Okay, now, let me, if I may, before you... I want to say that, again, it was an honor to work with the neighborhood councils. Sometimes, in what you do, because you're elected like us, and to me, if you're elected by three people or 30,000 people, you're still elected. And being an elected official is not easy, and it's not going to ever be easy. And sometimes, you're required to make tough decisions. Leadership, and I've said this before to you, leadership is not about doing what you want to do. Leadership is about doing what you have to do. And sometimes, leadership is about telling people what they need to know and not what they want to hear. So, I, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, want to go on record to give my thoughts as to where I am on this issue. Believe it or not, when we, as a council, voted for election reform, it was not that we would wind up with an extended term that motivated us. We felt, at the end of the day, we wanted to increase voter turnout. And all of the, if you believe it or not, or agree or not, statistics would lead us to believe, if we adjusted when we held the elections, that we would get a better voter turnout, and we want to be more representative of the city that we love. I think it's admirable that a lot of you would have concerns about extending your term. But at the end of the day, one of the most important things that the people of this city did, they voted to support the creation of neighborhood councils. They're not like this throughout the United States of America. We are one of the rare ones. So, to me, what's more important is for us to tweak this, wrestle this, wiggle this, until we get it right, because we want the neighborhood councils to continue long after all of our terms have expired. So, it's for me to try to keep my eye on the big prize. And I think that if it takes this additional time in order to get this right, then that's what we should do, and that's what I support. So, when the vote comes to extend, I will support it. And I, I think online voting is the future. I think we had a lot of problems. I don't think it's ready yet. I think a lot of vetting, a lot of work needs to be done. But I just want to say, before I have a quick meeting, because I have to plan my son's rehearsal dinner, and if I don't do that, I'm going to have to come live with Ann Jobe, because, or Joanne, because my wife will kick me out of the house. But I just want to say that I respect all of you, all of the work you do, no pain, I mean, no pay, headaches, headaches, but you chose that. That's leadership, and it takes courage sometime to be a leader. And I am saying that I think, at the end of the day, let's do this, let's do it right. 10 years from now, nobody's going to remember that we served an extra year, or that they served extra. But what they will remember is a system that we helped put in place that can hopefully function and grow and be the model. And it takes courage sometime to be a leader. And I am saying that I think, at the end of the day, let's do this, let's do it right. Ten years from now, nobody's gonna remember that we served an extra year, or that they served extra. But what they will remember is a system that we helped put in place that can hopefully function and grow and be the model for the rest of this country. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm glad I was able to come, and I'll be back in two weeks unless that's the wedding time. Then you might not want me to come back and vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And he really wanted to be part of this vote, so that's why he wanted to speed this up. But it has been deferred for two weeks. But with that said, I have a couple of questions. I know Councilmember Sedio does as well, but if you could give us a quick presentation. And actually, we have the city attorney here as well. Darren Martinez, if you could come on up and join us.
Holly Walcott, city clerk. I'm gonna start because mine's really fast, and that's just a procedural matter for all of you to understand, and that is, the city clerk was funded to conduct the neighborhood council elections for 2018 in the adopted budget. So that means that is our marching orders. So in order for anything other than that to happen, the council would have to take action.
Yes.
So that's just, you know, it's not an either-or that's in front of you. It is, the train's already moving. The city clerk has no objection to moving to 2019. It would allow us to work with the neighborhood councils to develop better policies and procedures. The other issue I want to address on, that I've heard repeatedly, is that we would not, whether or not there's online voting, we're happy to run those elections, but there would always be paper ballots at the polls.
Gracie.
Gracie Lee, general manager for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Thank you, honorable members, for your time, and to our neighborhood councils, thank you for coming and providing your comment. Really quickly, as stated in our report of August 2nd, we are supporting the postponement of neighborhood council elections from 2018 to 2019, given the amount of work that we feel is necessary to really, hopefully, get online voting in place and to also get election outreach in place. As from our January 17th, 2017 report, we really wanted to have some funding by March in order to, March 2017, in order to make sure that we had an election outreach campaign ready to launch on July 1st for our Valley neighborhood councils, who, in the last three election cycles, have really, unfortunately, not really seen the full benefits of any citywide campaigns because we typically do not have it in place when we are funded on July 1st, the previous election year. So that's one of our concerns. And in short, you know, as I've been campaigning for these many years, I really believe in online voting. I believe in the system. We've seen even from Silmar's, you know, first test of online voting, going over the hill, we were already making changes that improved the system. And then having that opportunity to have subdivision elections, we're able to, again, I think, create a better system and utilize the voter registration database that was created by Everyone Counts instead of the QuickBase database that we had in the beginning, which caused the issues that were noted in our January 17th report. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is this the city attorney, or have you got anything to add?
City attorney's over there. Everyone counts.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, do you want to add anything, city attorney? It's okay, we have questions for you.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, okay. Do you want to add anything?
Just to introduce myself very briefly, council members, thank you very much for having me this afternoon. My name's James Simmons. I'm the vice president of technology and operations for Everyone Counts. I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Great, great. So Gracie, I have a couple of questions for Dunn. We know you've been partially funded for this year, about a tune of about $100,000. So if the elections were to push back to 2019, what would your office do with the money that's currently allocated?
We would, we were funded about $106,000 for election outreach for this fiscal year, and we would work with the neighborhood councils, as we would have anyway, no matter what amount we receive, to actually form an election outreach campaign. We definitely want to work in collaboration with our neighborhood councils to do that so that we could have it, basically, the funds that I was requesting for this March of 2017, we would actually have that now for 2018 to get ready for 2019, particularly for the Valley area. The other thing, too, is my hope is that we will have the ability to continue voter registration for online voting. I think what we, what the main issues that we saw with voter registration was, particularly for those with documentation, was folks not wanting to upload the various documents that they had to in order to register online. And so that's why the pop-up polls were really successful in that sense. But we would like to collaborate with city clerk and go out into the community with neighborhood councils and do a lot of in-person voter registrations so that we wouldn't have to have that issue of people being reluctant to upload voter registration documentation.
We would have concerns about doing that at this time. We would not be in favor until we are sure that everything that is in the voter registration database has been double-checked. So we would, we'd have to talk about it.
So, you know, one of the big concerns were the outreach. And, you know, whether to have an effective neighborhood council election online or otherwise, we need to have greater turnout numbers as well as better, greater outreach. And in 2016, our turnout numbers did not meet the targets that were set. So what can be done differently in 2018 or 2019 to effectively get the word out?
So in regards to the 2016 numbers, I do want to emphasize that one of the reasons some of the numbers weren't met is because we anticipated, we had anticipated going into it that the majority of neighborhood councils would be doing online voting and not necessarily just the 34 that ended up doing it. However, as I mentioned before, for election outreach, it's critical to not only have the actual resources, such as funding and staff, to do that, which it was difficult for us to shift some of our election outreach staffers to conduct election outreach last fiscal, or last election cycle because we were busy trying to build up a substitute voter registration because of the delay in the Everyone Counts voter registration being completed. So we would actually have that time to now do election outreach, hopefully have the resources to do that, and to start it early. As I mentioned again, with the Valley, you have to, you really have to start in March of the, like, a whole year ahead, before the elections. So that's, those would be how we would be utilizing those resources in the time.
You know, there's actually three options on the table. Have the election on 18, move it to, or just move it to 19, or the third option is have election on 18 and again on 19.
We think that would be cost prohibitive because you'd end up having to fund it twice.
So that's the question I wanted to ask the city clerk and Dunn. What are your, could that be done?
It could physically be done, but again, you're going to, you're going to have to fund the same infrastructure twice. So it's cost prohibitive.
But as far as, assuming, you know, if we get the cost out of the way, if the cost is not a problem, which obviously-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we technically can do it. Is it going to be completely rushed and, you know, not the best that we could make it because of the timeframe? Yeah, that's, it's going to be an issue. And also, it would require us to lock down bylaw amendments for basically two years or like, and I already know neighborhood councils are like, "No." So, and it would, it would also affect subdivision, when we would hold subdivision as well. I think that those are factors that we need to look at.
Okay. And obviously, you believe in online voting, but why do you believe that online voting is a key feature for neighborhood council elections?
Well, neighborhood councils are about inclusivity and really engaging all members of the public, all ages, and, you know, whether they're computer literate or not, because there is always that paper ballot. But, you know, we're gonna miss out on engaging a whole generation of Angelenos in civics if we don't find a way to have them easily vote from a cellphone, from their smartphone or online. I also think that online voting also provides us, someone mentioned during public comment, that translation issue, like, you can take the, you can do the whole online voting journey in a language, in language, if you needed to. We had that in Spanish and Korean, and so for last elections. And I think that that is very important in terms of engaging folks. I mean, those are just two of the many, many benefits, I think, for online voting that I think we need to consider and keep online voting for neighborhood councils.
Okay. For Everyone Counts, I have a question. Is your platform open source?
No, our platform is not open source in the sense that we do not publicly release the source code. What we do allow is any of our customers are given access to the source code, and will frequently turn that over either themselves or to an auditor, academic group, or something like that to perform an assessment on it. But generally speaking, while we, while we respect quite a bit the work that's going on in open source for online voting, our belief is that there is still value in terms of security and integrity in maintaining some of those things internal to our organization and to our customers.
So I know there were a couple of security issues, and in the two, but one of the reasons was in 2016, your contract was not ready in time to handle all the voter registrations through your platform. So assuming that we have everything in place now, how would the security of the voter registration look in the future elections if online voting were to occur?
Yeah, as you noted, we've certainly, in the last round of elections, made significant progress on the voter registration implementation in this environment. One of the things I'd like to call attention to is voter registration is a significant part of our business as a company as well. And so, coming up over the next couple of months here, at the end of 2017, we will be going live with our voter registration system serving the entire state of New Jersey. First quarter of 2018 will be going live with our voter registration in Shelby County, Tennessee, which is the largest county in Tennessee, and hopefully others to follow. And we believe that we are setting the standard in voter registration security. We are part of the National Association of Secretaries of State Election Cyber Security Task Force, which was created as a response to some of the things that have been in the news and some of the things that have happened over the last several months. And so I think I can say quite comfortably that security really is the heart and soul of our business.
May I also address that question?
Sure.
And that is, is that the security issues that occurred during the last round of elections had in part to do with who had access to the system and what they were allowed to do with the data. The city clerk has a closed data policy, i.e., we don't allow any voter data to get out. So we would have extensive procedures in place on who would be able to access any database, because right now, it should only be those people who are verifying documentation. And there should be any, no reason that any data was ever extracted and sent out as a report. And if there was any case for that, it would require multiple levels of approval.
Yeah. No, and we're very excited that the city clerk's involved now, and I think the neighborhood council and everyone else is extremely excited as well, as well as a tremendous amount of trust immediately that we were able to instill in the system. So my final question, Councilmember Sedio, I know you might have questions as well. This is the most important question, I believe. This is for the city attorney. So whether we move the election from 2018 to 2019, or hold the election in three years of, in two, whether we, the various variations, right? Either way, they're gonna get one three-year term. So what ordinance or charter requirements do we need to be aware of that needs to be changed?
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Darren Martinez. Right now, the elections are handled under Administrative Code Section 20.36. So in any instruction that would come to our office would be to, we could do it, we could do it a couple of ways. And this isn't without precedence. We did this back in 2008 when we did something very similar. We changed the terms and we changed the dates when the elections would be held. So we could just simply instruct that that amendment be, or that ordinance be amended to reflect both the change in the dates when the city clerk is authorized to conduct the elections, as well as make it clear that we do the extension of time. I'd probably recommend that we do the extension of time as well through the ordinance, just because it's, you know, it's easier, it's clean in that, in that way. Technically, the city clerk or the department could do that right now through stipulation because they have the broad authority under that policy to simply extend it by their, by their power under creating regulations for doing these types of changes now.
So no need for charter amendment or any-
No, it's not a charter amendment issue. Yes, correct.
Okay. Councilmember Sedio?
I think the only important question is the question of asking, what's the purpose of the election? And I think if you lay that out, that principle out, then we get to the answers of all the other side questions. So if we want democratic participation, we want it robust, we want it to include all languages, all ethnic groups, et cetera. My campaign, as you know, was in six, seven languages in my district. Very proud of that. We're able to get the resources, to get the volunteers, to get people to participate in all those languages. That means all these communities can participate. When you think of the undocumented community in Los Angeles and the immigrant community in Los Angeles, and you want to know, well, then what's the goal? And if you want robust participation of all residents of Los Angeles, then the answers will come and follow from that point. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sedio. And with that said, and with all the testimony, and I think both council president and council member Sedio has eloquently expressed the inclination of this committee. But I want you to first know that, you know, it was actually council president Wesson's office who first, when we first discussed this initially, when we had tremendous concerns, as did some of the neighborhood councils, about, you know, the neighborhood council members, current members, were elected by their constituency for a two-year term. And, you know, we are very much in favor of making sure that the will of the people is carried out. However, you know, with the report from Dunn and neighborhood council feedback, as well as, you know, I really tremendously think the importance of online voting, I mean, it is the future, not just for neighborhood councils, but for elections in general. But obviously, there's been lots of problems. And I really need the online voting system to work. And I think it's pretty clear, as evident in just the testimony heard today, everybody, many people in general support online voting, but everyone agrees there needs to be tremendous updates and reforms and corrections. So, and that's the, that's the sentiment also along, amongst my colleagues in the city council. In order for me to get them to support online voting, they're not confident right now. So I, so I think it's important to have that extra time to shore up the online voting system. And most importantly, I think it's item number five on the recommended, the recommendations that's going to be put forth today, which is asking the city attorney to do exactly what he just answered, but requesting the city attorney to report back on the feasibility of moving the election timing from either 2018 to 2019, or from '20 to '21, in terms of ordinances that would be required to extend a two-year term to a three-year term. So, and going back, taking a step back, as Councilmember Sedio just stated and Councilmember Wesson did, while we want to honor the voters' wishes of two years of what they voted their members to be, we want to look at the overall arching goal of neighborhood councils. It was about participation. It was about making sure that we support our neighborhood councils. And being a neighborhood council member myself, I, we've shared many stories on our frustrations of all the problems that we need to address. But the bottom line is, while we want the will to the people to be heard, we, more importantly, we need the neighborhood councils to work. So we are not taking the vote today because I think it's very important, it's very prudent that we're, I'm gonna read the recommendations directed to the departments to make sure we double-check on a lot of these issues. But as you could tell, this committee is more inclined towards, moving towards 2019 for the various reasons outlined by many of the neighborhood councils, as well as the Dunn report. But I'd like to read the recommendations. One, I'd like to instruct Dunn, this committee likes to instruct Dunn on, to present details within 14 days on how the department would use election funding from this fiscal year to conduct election outreach and voter registration in preparation for elections in 2019 if they were to be delayed. Two, we want to instruct Dunn to prepare and present an election outreach plan within 14 days that demonstrates how the additional and existing outreach funding would be spent to increase neighborhood council election turnout. And if the elections were to be held in 2018, the plan should reflect options on the following additional funding levels. Empowerment L.A. election outreach at 288,000, at 500,000, and a million. And the plan should also consider the following ideas: how Dunn can develop a robust voter contact database for each neighborhood council area to notify voters of upcoming neighborhood council candidacy deadlines and elections. Two, how Dunn can develop an outreach, outreach-in-a-box menu for neighborhood councils to choose from to provide tailored outreach options to each neighborhood. And three, how to prioritize these- to each neighborhood; and three, how to prioritize this recruitment of candidates, as a strong candidate poll has demonstrated a causal relationship to turnout and civic engagement. Three, we want to instruct the city attorney to report back within 14 days on how the city clerk's election division would review and prevent issues uncovered by the 2016 neighborhood council online voting elections if they were to be allowed in the future. B --
Sorry, do you mean city clerk?
City clerk, I'm sorry, did I say?
City attorney.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, city clerk. B, manage voter registration and data security for online elections if they were to be allowed in the future. Item four, want to reaffirm and instruct Dunn to report on health education, to our committee, with the recap of the online voting for the April 2017 subdivision elections, along with recommendations, if any, from that experience, and to instruct the report to be prepared within 45 days. Five, which is most important, which I read earlier about the city attorney, and the feasibility and the need for the ordinance changes. And six, we're going to continue this file for two weeks, the August 22 meeting of this committee, where we will vote on whether the elections will be in 2018 or 19. So with that said, like your second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sedio. And thank you very much to all the neighborhood council members for coming out, and all the community. And that will conclude our meeting for the day. Thank you so very much.